Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending the change work session. I am going to start. We have a gentleman here from Caputo Insurance with a renewal proposal. Mr. Bradley Costin, if you will step forward to the mic. And we're going to let Mr. Costin go first. He does have a two or three hour drive back home, so.
Thank you for doing that for me. I have a warm dinner like that. Well, this is not my 10 years standing in front of you guys due to the renewal. So, the good news is I bring you lower numbers for the renewal. Nothing went up this year. You all have the proposal in front of you, so if you turn to the second page, I'll make this as quick as possible so you guys can get on with the business of the evening. It's just the summary page of our renewals this year for you. The first thing that you'll see is the Utica package renewal. That's your property, your liability, auto, umbrella, everything in the package. I got you a rate lock last year, so the rates stayed the same this year. Last year, the price was $125,000. You'll see, we actually came in a couple thousand dollars lower than that this year. So, that price is down to 123. Nobody else can compete with that. I got quotes from PSBA, from Liberty Mutual. I also got quotes from another company called Wright. It made sense to stay with the lowest. They've done a great job. They were loyal to you guys, gave you the rate locks. That just makes sense to stay with the lowest, so 123. Moving on to the workers' comp. I gave everybody a handout, the Synergy Insurance Comp. Everybody pretty much familiar with the Synergy Insurance Comp, what they've done for you guys in the district? Just so you know, I came in here 10 years ago. Your experience mod was a 1.7. What that means is you had a 70% penalty on top of what you would normally be paying. If you have a 1.0 on your workers' comp, you get a flat rate. But you guys, the school districts, claims were so high that you were also paying 70% penalty on top of that. You were almost $300,000 in premium 10 years ago. And I have some numbers. Your claims between 2007 and 2009. The average claim is over $280,000. So, if you look down the list there, that third column, look at your average claims right now. Look at the claims that you have. 2014 is an anomaly. There was two bad claims there. However, Synergy mitigated those claims to what could have been easily over a million dollars. So, they're on the claims. And that's what Synergy's done for you guys. They've been in the district, they've been in all the buildings. They've handled the loss control. But the biggest part of what Synergy has done is mitigated the losses down to a very, very minimal amount. So, they're coming in $30,000 cheaper. Last year, you guys, you can see on the sheet, 2018, they're 188. They're 189. So, just about $30,000 cheaper. And if you look, your experience mod this year is .899. You're finally under that 1.0. You're actually getting credits. So, they've done an incredible job. And so you know, the claims folks at Synergy, each claims person only handles 50 accounts. A typical work comp claims person will handle 250 to 300 claims at one time. So, Synergy only handles 50 claims at a time to give you that one-on-one, personal attention that they need to get folks back to work. So, everybody understanding what Synergy's done so far for you guys. I think you've been amazing. I also went out and got a quote. New markets come into western Pennsylvania, NJM, New Jersey Manufacturing. They've been in the eastern part of the state for a few years, but now they've asked Caputo to come into the western part of the state. If you look at their price, it's $128,000. Lot cheaper, but they do not have the claims mitigation that Synergy has. They will not work the claim. They're basically like PSBA was 10 years ago. You got a claim, we'll write the check, pay it out. Whenever these boy comes back to work, they come back to work. What happens then? Your claim costs go higher. And those claims are directly related to your experience mod. You see the .899 that you have right now? Look back over the past four years at how low those claims are. That's why your mod is low. Workers' comp is a different creature than regular insurance. So, the workers' comp insurance is completely different because that insurance and the rates are based on the previous four years of claims. So, if you go to New Jersey, you might save $30,000 now. This year, correct, but if they don't mitigate a claim and you have a real high claim, that claim is stuck with you for four years. And it could cost you four times out of nine. It could cost you over $120,000 in the long run just to save $30,000 this year. But I wanted to do my due diligence and show you, there are companies out there that are quite synergizing, trying to be aggressive to get into accounts. But with workers' comp, honestly, I wouldn't mess around with the cheaper company because the product is the claims mitigation. It's not the price and the premium. It's the claim mitigation that you're paying for. So, I'm going to stand here and tell you right now, I would continue to go with Synergy. They've worked really, really hard over the past 10 years, and they've got you down to .89. And remember, you were over $300,000, almost $300,000 10 years ago. And in 10 years, we're down to 159.
My comp is in current cost. What do those figures represent?
What it is, is that is your, like, consistent three things. Medical costs, indemnity, and a reported cost. Okay?
Reported cost?
It's, it, there's, there's costs set aside for a report only. I said record. I said report. Should be report. My apologies. So, what it is, is just something is set aside. For example, right now, you're, notice how 2019 is blank? Right now, today, as you stand, Albert Gallatin has a $44,000 claims cost for the past 12 rolling out hundred months. Only $11,000 is actual money paid out to medical costs. There are $33,000 set in reserve for indemnity, which payroll pays somebody. That's why getting somebody back to work is so important. Because not only are you paying somebody that's out of work, but you're also paying the replacements. So, by Synergy getting people back to work, you're saving the payroll. So, every dollar you save upfront is about $4 to waste on the bad side of it. So, you guys are doing great. You're going to end up doing good here next year. If you leave Synergy and these guys at NJM, New Jersey Manufacturing, blow it, you're going to have a hard time getting back into Synergy. And I think you can understand why. They've been below you guys, so they're open to be lower also. But are there any questions there again? Again, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you to stay with Synergy. You guys do what you need to do. They've proven themselves over the past 10 years with their service, with their loss prevention. They've been in and out of every building. So, it'd be a shame to see somebody else ride on their coattails all the hard work they've done. Okay? Yeah, I really do think you could have stepped backwards. Why do all this hard work and jumping through all the hoops with Synergy just to let somebody else come in that's not going to give you the attention that you need? We good? Any questions? Thank you very much for your time. If anybody does have a question, Chris and Andy know how to get hold of you. Okay? Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it. Have a good summer.
Go to, go to the principals. Mr. Hutchinson, the high school. I think you have some information you need to share at the board?
Here's our learning support plan, which we had to create for that ACSI plan, which is Additional Target Support Improvement Plan. Sorry. This plan has to be submitted by July 1st. So, the team worked, we went down to the IU yesterday, you can see some side notes, to make sure it was okay. If you look at it. So, we looked at the, we were targeted in graduation rate for learning support, tenants, regular tenants for learning support, and English and math. So, as you go through the plan, a little bit of the plan. We proposed one for 28 English for the duty. And then, once I have, this is me signature, Mr. Craig's signature, my signature, we'll upload the PD. So, we sat down here yesterday, Monday morning, to go over and make sure that we're good. Once you submit the PD, if they do send it back, then we'll work with the IU just to fix or correct. And if you make a correction, then we'll be pleased with that.
Can we say both the two measures?
Yeah, yeah, this will be good. And then, starting July, well, we should start this year, this is the planning stage. We put this plan in motion, we're thinking to do some improvements, and then kind of build on it. It's a three-year plan. And then, next year, when we get that information, it's a little. But as the state requires, we're looking to, we're looking to evolve, and that's had to be looked at.
Is this a part of every school work?
This is only the schools that got targeted. I think personally, we were down there, 309 preschools out of 500.
Is it just random or are you checking it?
No, it's successful. And, and some could be different categories. Some schools are down there just for tenants. Some are down there just for graduation. Any questions? If you have any, please look for a D. Mail. Once I said, once it's up there, we can continue to go ahead and look at for, we can make progress.
Good?
Yeah. Is this allowed to put a public review of that new project?
Well, it's going to be though. He says he can put it up, and he has it up for public review. We can continue to make progress.
So, the board can approve it as it's coming?
Yeah, yes.
Guys, can you, it's how do you determine the renewal, like, percentage?
Percentage increases is what they recommend. So, they could, yeah, that was recommended by the state. They increase the increase. The reason being is a three-year plan, hopefully those three years of increases give us awareness. You can see on there where I had a great number of writing, with these suggestions.
And you don't think that's a huge part of it?
Yes, yes. Then it's math, English, and regular.
And that's the state's interest?
Correct.
Any other questions? Any questions for Mr. Hutchinson, the high school from the general? I live in the high school right now. Last week, just we. We've had the REACH program.
Nice art, man.
They did a nice art for the Herald standard the other day. You know, they're all, REACH, a lot of our members in our community, doing service projects, keeping them qualified, putting on roofs, building stairs, ramps, painting, power washing, you name it. We work with the REACH staff, and they've been great to work with. And like I said, we'll go for about half the high school, and we've had a lot of compliments from the community with the help they're receiving. So, they will finish up this Friday. We have all of the equipment packed up. We're moving out Saturday. And then, we'll be able to finish doing the summer work in the high school next week in those areas. Any questions for Jason?
Hi, I think the REACH program is a one-on-one, you know, community that's helped them and that's a good thing. My question is, my understanding is that our summer PD class has overlooked when the REACH students are in the building. Has that affected the PD class and the future? Does that something that we should schedule at the same time?
The weather was unfortunate in that early start. The REACH program didn't take over the gym. We had the auxiliary gyms used for the summer. We were fortunate about how they get in there, and the staff was in there for five days, and then the kids came in. So, I think it was about maybe three days, and the weather was quite great, so our E was outside. I think rather than get registered, just some force work. There may have been a little bit of passive group because REACH was even at that time when the parents would come in. I'm sorry, the phys ed, summer phys ed people coming in. Then they would go, and they had the whole building. The only thing that REACH fulfilled with was obviously the gym, with the rest of them and everything else. But very fortunate that we had some other, and we kind of worked around it.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Yeah.
And then, I'll need an executive session from the school for the school staff.
Yep.
Any questions for Mr. Dillo at Albert Gallatin South?
I had a few questions from community members about, which I guess this isn't so much you as it is maintenance, about painting the entrance way. And then, also, I saw some people raised issues about the mower and the grass, because it looks like a field. So, I just told them that I would ask about it.
I do know the mower has been down for about two weeks. We did get it back. And they're in the process of trying to catch up with the grass. There's a lot of grass out there. And I think maybe after four or five times, continuing to chop up the grass, hopefully you won't see, it won't be as bad. As far as the portico, I don't have an answer.
That's, that's something that we've been talking about.
Yeah, the portico, we did get estimates on covering that with metal. I don't have that with me this evening, but I can have that for Wednesday. We want to move forward with getting that covered. I want to say the, well, tough ahead, the estimated price to cover that entire portico, a lot of concrete metal is around $23.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-five, it's somewhere around that. So, I would have to get that from Mr. Chestnut. I believe he has the estimates that we give.
Is that pure, is that a, or is it transportation?
Well, the paint and everything that's on it is lead. So, we can encapsulate all that versus painting it and having to redo that again in a few years. You know, we could have them cover it, encapsulate the stuff that's flaked, and cover it off, and, you know, be corrected. But you have the grass too. I know even when the mowers were working, with the amount of rain we had, and that was soft, they buried the mowers multiple times.
Right, I was just going to say that.
Somebody with a truck, cool mountain, because the ground is so soft. You know, so it's, it's been tough to keep up, and then whenever the weather was, was good, the mowers went down. And another maintenance department was working on mowers, pretty still. So, that's something we're all, we need to consider purchasing a couple new pieces of equipment. Just put, I know Mason Town had the same issue with their grass, with mowers that were down. And trying to take mowers over to have them cut grass and try to get caught up. So, it's been, that's been a difficult throughout the mission.
I believe also, several years ago, we were paying overtime to get grass mowed. And at that time, we were felt that especially during the summer, it wasn't necessary to do it on a regular basis. And it came down to, to paying overtime. And I don't know whether that is in effect this year or not. I just know several years ago, that was a concern.
Any other questions for Mr. Dillo? Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson is not in town. He's not here this evening. Obviously, Mr. Frisco, he was on vacation. Elementary principals, Renee Rose. Any questions for Mrs. Rose? Mrs. Baker for AO Wilson. Mrs. Fred Wilitsky, Frenchville. And Mrs. Hock, Mason Town. And Dr. Witt, Cloud. Any questions for your elementary principals? Okay, maintenance, as I said, Mr. Chestnut was not here. If there are any maintenance questions, I may, I can work with Mr. Zalowski and maintenance department, trying to make sure things are on par. I know that we do have a business office tied in with the sewage. That has been completed. We do have the contractor right now demoing. And I think they completed demoing the old subjug tank. So, that has been demoed, filled with stone, covered up, and seeded today. Dee Furtz Wainey has been tied in, and I believe it's been seeded and covered with, you know, straw outside. And they are working on the high school project as we speak. That project was more extensive. There was work they had to do with the kitchen, the grease traps. They only had a couple of weeks in the month of July where that wouldn't be utilized. So, they'll be doing that work in July for, in the kitchen inside. The outside work will involve tying in the sewage system, covering up, reseeding, as well as the treatment plant outside will be demolished. And that entire area will then be covered up, and will be additional parking in that student parking lot once that is all tied in and completed. So, as far as the sewage projects, you know, a couple of them completed. The high school's under construction now.
Yeah, and I, I talked to them today, on July 1st, Monday, they're really going to get after, when the kids will be gone, at the high school lot.
The parking lot, are they going to address the parking lot? Is that your bottom?
The student parking lot? Well, what they will do is they will patch everything. Or if you wanted to go in with them, and once that's done, if you wanted to have the entire lot completed with how we did the floor with tar and chipping and repainted, we would have the portion of that cost because they, they will always fix. So, it might make sense, who wants that, all that work is completed. Who wanted to redo that entire lot, they will pay for the portion of that. And then, we will pay for probably the majority of the lot getting resurfaced.
Will there be time for you to decide about that?
Well, there may be, you know, I mean, because like I said, right now, there's a lot of work to be done. And I don't want to do that lot with them having the foot, and then there to develop that sewage treatment plant and all the work that we're doing now. So, that's why you can help off with the sewage work, and they will.
How long do they need the contractor?
The contractor was working, Pickle Meany was working with the high school now?
No, no, no. The one that would be dealing with the parking lot.
Uh, they're still there. I can check with Ben Iker to see whenever they're going to be wrapped up. I know that they will be, they will be long.
Doing that parking lot, generally, would be a good idea.
Yeah, the, the total amount, I don't know how it would be. The gentleman that did that front, on course last time, no one that does that. I did contact George's township supervisor to see who's doing all their work like that throughout the township. And I haven't yet to speak to that gentleman to give you a price and help out with it.
I couldn't like to explain what happened to the G772 contract.
Correct.
The last time we were getting the number to him, I couldn't hear a parent.
Yeah, it's not a live topic. It's simply, you know. If you have to do it after the school starts, you can make adjustments or pardon.
We did, well, I think we did that first year with the letter tour. We made a couple of adjustments. So, we can work around that.
Hey, any other questions with maintenance? Anything in mind? I know we have an executive session to discuss with the maintenance personnel.
Financial, I have a similar group. I just, we're doing this as a three-year term. Did we ever discuss contracting this stuff out for three years exactly?
That's typically what we always do, is it's a three-year contractor, so you're in charge. We don't do it every three years.
Did we ever offer this new removalist the entire district? To see if we could be a larger company, and build on the entire district?
We, we have, but most people that are doing it don't have the equipment to be able to handle the entire district. So, that's, that's amazing to me. Why, years ago, I think the district went to bidding it out per school because one contractor doesn't have all the equipment to handle the entire district to make sure we can start a school one time or live in the lane. So, it's, it's always been bid, since I've compared as a three-year contract per school. Some contractors do it multiple schools. Some contractors do it only one school.
One contractor could do it all, all three.
Yeah. One contractor could do it all, they so desire it, they so desire it, she doesn't, because that's a lot more equipment they have purchased. Any other question with maintenance at this point? Okay, move on. Mr. Poland Technology is not here, but I do have something in executive session with personnel to discuss with you. Athletics, Mr. DuPont?
Yeah, I got the budget out there for you guys. It has to be adjusted. There's a couple things on there that shouldn't have been on there. Or so the soccer goal for, excuse me, Wayne.
Yes, sir.
It's hard to hear. Let me shut this fan off. I'm going to put everybody in here. Just give me a one minute. Is that better? All right, Dwayne, sorry about that. Go ahead.
No problem. Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that there's going to be more of the savings, around $4,563 with the elimination of that soccer goal. Mushel, why that's put on there, we don't need that. And also, the girls volleyball uniforms we ordered last year, so that will reflect on this year's budget. We're under budget, approximately $5,700 on there for the fall store for this. If you have any questions concerning the bids, please let me know.
Any questions for Mr. DuPont?
Now, I will need time in executive session for this question.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Mr. Gold Food Service?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. June has been a very busy month for us in food service. With the REACH mission program going on, it's been an undertaking, however, it's going very well. We'll be finishing it up Saturday morning. It's our last time to serve them. The summer feeding program just started at Mason Town. It actually started last Tuesday. Started off very slow with four students coming in for meals. Currently, I should say that as of yesterday, they're up to 30 a day. So, it is growing. We're going to give it some time to see if we can continue to promote and, and make that program work for us. I believe as the community gets, or as they're more aware of it, we'll start getting participation on the building. Along with their summer feeding, I've added south, north and south village schools. There's a program going on, 21st Century Grant Program through East End Community Center of Uniontown. We're serving approximately 15 meals combined to those sites. That is not a open site. It's an enrolled site for that group of communities. So, that is helping us as well. With the high school summer feeding, as Mr. Craig had brought up, the construction or the program as far as getting the sewage connected is going to the latest start of that summer feeding. That will be moved back to July 22nd. I will have that on Facebook and our website, so we'll make the community aware of that. Just because of the timing and how it was. Just because of the timing and how it was put together, we would only have one week to have that grease tractor moved, all the kitchen work done inside liberated and so we will be delaying that. As far as the end of year, the numbers are always what we want to look at to see where we're at. I do not have a preliminary for it, I do apologize. I hope to have that, well, I was going to say that, I will have that for July meeting. I may have it as early as tomorrow, depending on how things work out, schools and work with it. I will tell you that thus far, I'm pleasantly surprised with where we're at. Participation and breakfast has helped those numbers along with some different changes we've done throughout our program. So as we're closing out last school year, we're also preparing for the next school. The equipment grants, an update on that quickly. IAS has been subcontracted through folks we purchased the equipment off of to install. They have done site visits with our maintenance department and myself. We do have some work on our end as far as installing some wire, making sure that there are hookups for plumbing, and then we will move forward with that. I spoke with our maintenance guys today, and as soon as they get comfortable, they're going to go ahead and get that, whether the equipment is ready and in place.
Any questions for Mr. Gold? All right, thank you, Troy. Special Ed, Sherry is not here this evening. Mrs. Britvich, any questions for Mrs. Britvich? Okay. Elementary, federal funds, curriculum, nurses, Mrs. Beazak?
I just want to share with the board, let you know some specific questions that we are proud to tag on to what Mr. Gold has shared. We did host Kinder Camp at Friendship Hill and Mason Town last week, and it was successful at that for three days. We had approximately 33 kids, 28 at Mason Town, and the rest comprised from the Friendship Hill area. We were able to secure a bus that went one per building and did a trip, picked the students out, the babies. These were incoming kindergarten students. And we did feed them, and we were able to utilize Mr. Gold's program, and they had a great day. They were there from 9 to 2. Early learning skills, simple routines, letting them see the school, get used to it. We had three teachers. I want to thank Mrs. Briter at Friendship Hill, Heather Partley at Mason Town, Chris Coats at Mason Town also. I did have to bring on two nurses, one per building. And I do want to thank that security was there because in the midst of the little ones coming in, we were also giving the feeding program. So we had the doors open, so it worked out. It was, it just happened to gel the way everything worked out, and it was through the grant, through the United Way. And we were very pleased with it, the kids really enjoyed it. And they really benefited. They just put a lot of their own time into pre-planning because there's a huge budget for this. And I know they called in me and asked me if they could do this, and they were doing this on their end. So I do want to congratulate them, I want to congratulate Swetlinsky, Miss Topp, for helping me out with this. We did do this retarded in the schools for multiple reasons, those two particular schools. I would like to see it expand next year. But again, given this state of affairs right now, we'll have to see. But I am thankful for the United Way for offering us this opportunity, and of course, the students did benefit, so we'll see. Also want to acknowledge the fact that in the paper, you can see a lot of summer institute on Facebook and things like that, and then in the newspaper, summer of innovation. We did have teachers also participate, I'm not certain some of the shots of any of our teachers. I do, off the top of my head, I can't recall, but they did reach out to me because when I sent an email to them, the invite, I wanted them to get back to me. So we do have teachers participating in those events, even though they're not sponsored here. So I do want to say thank you for doing that to them on their behalf because they're doing it, they get credit, they are doing that in volunteering on their own time to go do these classes. So I did want to acknowledge the fact that we do have Albergalton teachers participating in those endeavors. Other than that, I will be beginning to start the federal program and planning, looking at data and making some decisions as far as where we are with our growth during test programs. There was some semblance of growth across the board. Growth, I'd say, or we were meaning to be, but we did have some small measures of growth. So hopefully that helps keep some of our schools off some of those watch lists. We don't want to have to continue to make additional education plans based upon school targets. So hopefully, you know, we will be able to tackle some of the challenges if we see there's some patterns of that if we're seeing. So if you have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Beazak. Were there any questions for Larry? Transportation, Mr. Farm?
Yeah, I do have some sad news to report. One of our school bus drivers passed away this past weekend, Wendy Glue, age 53. She has many years to serve. She currently serves in high school, more promotional support than school. Her, your thoughts on that? Other than that, I'm working on, I mentioned, here's Robby. Looks like we'll be able to try to lose one big bus. Can't come up with much more beyond that. If you have any questions for that answer.
You know, what kind of numbers would you come up with this year?
As far as our...
Where are we at on our question? Did we save money?
Oh, absolutely. A mere quarter of a million dollars. Certainly over $200,000.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Park? Thank you, Bill. School, security, safety, Chief Malecki is not here for personal reasons, I'll speak to you in executive session about some security measures for the district, as well as Mr. Hutchinson's Act 44 report that we have to present to the board in executive session, and have to also report that to PDP. Andy, financial?
I think it's this guy.
There's some things in executive session we'll be discussing with personnel and contracts and so on. Anything under administrative, administrative for the board, any questions or anything?
We can, if there's anyone here in the public forum.
I have something I'd like to talk about, I didn't have to invite anybody to the room first.
Is there anybody here in the public forum? Okay, just step forward, give your name. Brad, Brad.
My name is Mary Kendall. I live here in Smithville, and I teach at Albergalton South Middle School. I think most of you know who I am. I'm the band director there, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of the music department just a little bit. I know we have a lot of tough decisions to make. I don't envy you, I don't want to be in your seat right now, but I feel like I need to speak on behalf of the music department. I'm prepared to stay there. And the way that teaching positions is always, in my opinion, a worst-case scenario for our teachers and our students. However, in a department like ours, losing just one position can devastate a program. The music department works together to keep our program successful, and by taking away one middle school position, the following would happen. The first thing that would happen, obviously, was we would have no more middle school course. This will translate quickly into a much smaller high school course. One of the brightest spots in our district is the Fantastic Musical that is performed every year. As someone directly involved, I can tell you, we've definitely felt the effects of the limited amount of course offerings in the middle school. For reference, course used to be two classes. There was a sixth grade class and a seventh and eighth grade class that met every day during the school day. Since that has been eliminated, the high school program has felt the effects of that. This was kind of, I think, about eight years ago. Also, if we have no general music teacher, then those teaching responsibilities would fall to the band director, myself and Mrs. Diamond. This means there would be no more band lessons, not only for the middle school kids, but also for the elementary students. Now you're killing, what killing, which are hurting two programs pretty significantly. We have struggled mightily to keep the band going since it was scheduled during the enrichment period at the middle school. I predicted then that the numbers would drop drastically, and unfortunately, I was right. Now taking away the lessons, and I'm not sure where that will leave us down the road. The third thing I ask you to consider, the following question, is it worth the money or the cost of one teacher to have such an effect on an entire program? Many studies have shown the benefit of studying music, especially learning an instrument, yet we continue to make that more difficult for our students, and now we're in a tough situation. Please consider the consequences of eliminating that position carefully, and thank you for listening. I have a copy for each of you.
I would like to raise an issue. I really think it is worth we should move towards doctrine of policy, where we make the proposed agenda for the meetings available to the public when we report. There was an article, a newspaper article, recently, an online news article about a receiver being appointed for the Harrisburg School District, not by the school district's choice, obviously, and one of the first things that she did was to insist on making those agendas available to the public prior to the meeting. The input of teachers, community members like Mrs. Kendall is invaluable. I think that the only way that we're going to get meaningful input about that is if we put those agendas out to the public in advance. If they, if they don't know what's on the agenda until they come to the meeting, that can't happen. And I think, I think that as for transparency purposes and coming together, moving forward, we need to level that direction.
Is there a legal requirement to have...
No, there's, there's, some municipalities, state legislature have that requirement, but there is no requirement for school districts to have that requirement.
But again, just because it's not a legal requirement, doesn't mean that we can't go above the bar and do something because it's a federal district. And I understand that, and I mean, it's no secret that I posted the agenda for tomorrow's meeting on Facebook, and you know what? It's not easy to put ourselves out there for criticism and ridicule, and we are making hard decisions, but we can get more community endpoint and more constructive criticism and more good ideas and more critique if we include all members of the community.
What do you suggest?
That whenever it is being made to the board on the Thursday before the meeting, why is it not put out on our, on our school district website? Let everybody see it. And then that way, there is positive input, and you gotta take the good with the bad, but I'll take 100 negative comments if I get one good one that gives us a good idea about going to the district in the right direction. What would it possibly hurt to let the community know what's going to be on the meeting?
I guess, Mr. Wayne, there were things that weren't totally, it could be, or, you know what I'm saying? If it's not decided, if, you know, it could be whole, and then they have to come to the workshop or listen to the...
If the agendas do change, there were changes made in SAV to manage, that would be one issues, I guess, that would be, if the agenda, something's added, something's taken off, the combination of both, that happens up to the...
And that's to be expected. You can still give them an idea of what's going to be on it. And I know, so some of the changes about the, some of the issues with respect to life skills being correctly identified as life skills, was that something that was identified because somebody in the community picked up on it, or did it being shared publicly?
Yes.
Yeah, so there you go. So I mean, and that was something that immediately was just overstepped. So if it hadn't been made available to the public, that mistake may not have been corrected. And I get, just because we would put it out there to the public in advance, doesn't mean that it's not so. The same way we can amend the agenda up until during the meeting, just because we put it out there, doesn't mean that we're struggling that, we can change it.
I'd like to put it out there a week in advance.
I don't, I just want, I just want everyone to realize, I want people to realize that there will be changes. It's not that it isn't going to be set in stone, if something comes, and then they come here to, to talk about it, that that wasn't the agenda that was going to be. They have to understand that, because that's sometimes what gets people in trouble.
We are a lawyer, so I'd like to see it excluded.
Yeah, they need to understand that.
Why can't you post it on the public forum? I mean, on this, on this, Mr. Black's on your board.
And if there's blanks, there are blanks.
I'm in favor of posting it a week in advance. I'd just like it to exclude specifics about our employees. For instance, when we talk about cuts, you wouldn't want someone to think for a week they're definitely losing their job. And then we deliberate and...
On the public side of that, if we're wanting names, isn't it important if a, if a class of people in our school, whether it's teachers or aides or the music department, don't they have the right to come to the board to defend themselves and, and tell the board about the positives of their position? And they may not know, if we say, I mean, there's difference between leaving a blank with a name, and I did, I mean, whatever the board decides, that's the board's discretion. But to leave that off there, you're, you're taking part of the positive of the public viewing away if you don't disclose what's going to be on it.
No problem. We could go to engine, but, but yeah. We could amend the policy to reflect that when the school board is given the tentative agenda that will be made public by displaying it on our district website. I don't want to say a week in advance because sometimes we have it ready for you on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and I don't want to be fidgety to say, well, we didn't hear that on Tuesday, we're not calling the policy. But when it's paid, available to the board, we put them in the mail, or somebody picked them up, you know, then we can, you know, revise the policies to reflect that. They'll do it for us.
And then, you know, these Facebook gatherings.
Is there anybody else for public?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Bromley, and I have to agree with Ms. Kendall, both of my grandkids are in band, and if it wasn't for her, my kids had her since fourth grade. My grandson is borderline autistic, and he's learned a couple different instruments from her. And if you take band away, I don't know what my grandkids will do. He is flourish domestically with her because he has come out of his shell, he marches in the band with her, and she'll tell you, he has really, really flourished with her. And that's what I said, band has been known to bring these kids out of their shell. My kids are straight A's, and I just don't know, to tell you, if you take that out because they go from enrichment, and that, that class has really helped them. And anybody else that has band, you need to let them have that extra class. Like you said, what was it, how many years?
Eight.
Eighties. Because I've never had band, I know a few of you has had band back in the 70s and 80s, when band was a class. So I don't know what the deal is now that you just want to not give that extra class as a band and want to do away with it.
No, I'm just going to do it once. It's just a hard decision to figure out. And I'm probably, I think it's out on the board, using a lot of, drawing my career in. I know there's not one person who, who wants to, who can.
So she does an excellent job, so please don't, don't do away with that.
Thank you. Anybody else for public forum? Okay, thank you. There is a need for executive session, for personnel, contracts, like the board, like the bargaining, security, and security. So at this time, we will take a 10-minute recess. So at this time, we will take a 10-minute recess, and then we will all reconvene for our executive session in here in 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks.